Way down there, Larry.
I'm gonna make an adjustment tonight.
Bring your nameplate.
Yeah, let me switch the nameplate. There you go. Alright, let's go.
If you stay there, you may claim it.
You may like it better.
I'm squatting tonight.
Get here early next meeting that's taken.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody ready?
We're ready.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 2, 2018. And for the record, the time is 7:00 PM. I'd like to thank everybody for getting out on the cold night. Hope you've got a good year going. And we'll move it rapidly as possible. We've got some technical things we need to discuss through tonight. Could you give us an update on the fire, please? What we know?
We have four departments on scene plus ours. We do have an aerial piece up in the air mount. The fire is extended through the building. It's gonna take extended time to get control of the fire.
Has it burned as far as the building next door?
No, sir. We've got blocks up and can't get any other structure.
Okay.
Chris, this time, can you answer what the response time was on the aerial piece?
The aerial piece come from Rocky Mountain Station 6, so it would have been approximately fifteen, sixteen minutes, maybe.
Okay.
So I can get you a true time of that once the report's done on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, the first item of business is to approve the minutes of our meeting Tuesday, December 5. Have the minutes been correctly recorded? If they have, the Chair will entertain a motion unless there are amendments.
I have an amendment.
Okay.
On page three, the reference to Kara Malonzy did not show to the meeting. There should be some references to who she is and the purpose of her supposedly being at that meeting, since she was the key figure coming from the Institute of Government. Did you ever get any feedback from her?
I didn't. Okay.
But you had scheduled her for that meeting.
Yep. And changed everybody else around to fit her schedule. Yep, it was not comfortable for us.
But there should be some reference to who she is.
Okay. Can you do that now? Are there other changes? Okay, if not, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Certainly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of December 5, 2017. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor of approving amendments of that date with, as amended, approving the minutes with amendments. Indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Corey, the minutes are approved. Okay, we've had no requests of citizens' comment. We've got some items for consideration, the first of which is appointments to our municipal service district advisory board. We've had two names recommended for us, Angela Dolls, who's owner of the Unity Hair Salon, would like to be reappointed for a two-year term, and Cindy Shipers, who owns the Insurance Center at 333 West Washington Street, would like to be appointed as a new member serving a two-year term. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve these people.
So made.
Certainly.
It has been moved and seconded. These two persons will be approved. Any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
I have a question about the advisory committee. Are minutes kept at those meetings?
I have to assume so.
Brian is the secretary for the Service District.
Brian, do you have the minutes from the meeting when declarations were discussed?
Is Ms. Shipers here?
Yeah, I thought I saw her. Yeah, she was waving her hand back there.
Stand up, please, ma'am.
I said it.
Okay, how are you?
She's one with a red hand.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, item B. Let me get back on track here. Lost my stuff here. Item B is a discussion consideration to propose changes in the Public Works and Public Utilities Department. If you have followed through what our manager is proposing here, we have long considered the merger of our Public Works and Public Utilities Department. We had two persons in charge, one of each, Jamie Baines and Larry Williams, and we've discussed over time of merging those two when the opportunity was convenient, which has now come with Larry's retirement. And our manager has proposed a new structure where we move the, where we combine the Public Works Director position with the Public Utilities Director position and rename it as a Public Works Director. They create an assistant of two kinds, one to do work and one to do administrative work. And the plan is to fund this thing with the existing salaries that's coming from those three positions. And the way the arithmetic works out, it's been given to me, we'll end up with surplus money. Would you care to address those numbers, Hank?
Certainly.
You tied, got something else going?
Yeah, the general management plan, we have three positions right now, and we're proposing to maintain three positions.
Does that help you? You already got them?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. I thought I made a plan yet for reference.
Oh, you speak to that.
No, I'll be here to do that.
Sure. Our general plan here is to maintain the same number of positions here, but we're looking at having an assistant director, two assistant directors, one for administration and one for operations, and one director who oversees both. So we're not looking at adding or creating any new positions, but certainly changing around the structure that we have now. This crosses two different funds. The three positions that are involved, we have two of them are paid out of the Enterprise Fund currently and one out of the General Fund. That would remain the current structure. At the moment, the Public Utilities Director and Utility Maintenance Crew Leader are paid out of the Enterprise Fund, and our Public Works Director is currently paid out of the General Fund. So we would change that to the new Public Works Director position, and the Assistant Public Works Director for Operations would be paid out of the Enterprise Fund. And the Assistant Public Works Director for Administration would be paid out of the General Fund. So we would have to, I anticipate having an outside posting for the administrative position with internal promotions and hirings for the other two positions. So I anticipate a significant savings in our General Fund between the difference of what our now-retired Public Works Director's salary was and what we would hire an Assistant Director for Administration to be.
Okay.
The job description for the Assistant Public Works Director, is that the job description for both positions?
It is the job description for both, and that is consistent with other positions we have in the town. When we reorganized the Police Department a year ago, we did the same thing with the Police Captain position. We have a Police Captain for Administration and a Police Captain for Patrol. It's in one job description. We've also done that with our Sergeant positions in the Police Department as well, so it's a consistent practice. And that's a good thing, because if someone's given any duties on a day-to-day basis that may deviate at all from what's in the job description, then you have issues. So you want it to be as general as possible in this type of situation.
So it's more than just administrative. They've got to have a working knowledge of the operations.
Yeah, they could.
Well, they would need to learn part of the operations, but that would not be their expected day-to-day duties.
But it sounds like it in the description.
Yep.
Up to and including any of the things that are in that description. It doesn't mean they would be responsible for everything that's listed in the description.
Mr. Manager, may I make a suggestion or observation?
Yes, sir.
In my prior employment, we had always had a catch-all in job descriptions. You've got it written out, but the last line in all descriptions was, "And other duties as directed."
Before other duties as assigned.
That's right, other duties as directed. You put that in, and you call everything.
That's in there.
It is in there.
It's under the general statement of duty, and it is under-
What was it, the beginning?
Roman numeral three, duties and responsibilities, under essential duties and tasks. It's the very last bullet.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If you would also explain the exempt and non-exempt FLSA status.
Okay, that may be something better for Lou to speak on.
The difference is, the Public Works Director is purely going to be an administrative. It's majority administrative position. And that is exempt under FLSA. We do not pay overtime for that position, because it's expected as a department head that you would work more than forty hours. The other positions may work more than forty, but they will be at a non-exempt level. So we would pay them company story time at time of need.
Other comments? And then there are pay-scale adjustments, which you've seen, and job descriptions, and creation of the new position. Okay, what's the will of the council?
Go along with it.
Chair here, motion of that effect?
There was a motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. We approve the proposed changes of the Public Works and Public Utilities Department as proposed by our managers. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it is done. Okay, item C relates to the same topic, where we have to get into the town ordinances and change the language as we create the new positions. And if you look at that on page, under the blue tab and the following page, you'll see where we're changing all the language from Public Utilities, from Public Utilities Director that's going to Public Works. And that's the same in both documents. So we're changing those substance, just words. The Chair here, motion to approve these changes?
I move, we approve these changes as listed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's a move and a second. We approve the changes of the ordinances. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, that is done. Okay, item D, we're down to discussion and consideration the purchase of a 2018 Pierce Enforcer Fire Pumper. We have to do a couple of things. We want to approve a resolution to buy the thing. And second, we have to consider what type of contract we're going to use. The contract, we have found, they have some problems in it. But we've also found that we can operate without a contract and use a purchase order in lieu thereof to the same effect, with certain terms and conditions attached there too, which you have just received. Okay, is there any discussion on any of these?
Mayor, before we go forward-
We've got to have a motion before we can discuss.
Before we can discuss?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion that we proceed.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, good.
Thank you. I would like for Chris John, our acting chief, for the night anyway, to come forward and let us know exactly how much work is going into this, because we are moving pretty fast on this, but we're doing it for several reasons.
But it's also been planned for quite a while.
And I won't get into elaborating on that.
Go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
Just to let you know, we started, there was a committee of seven put together at the Fire Department. It's five volunteers and two career staff. They started on this truck approximately August of 2015. The first drawings were submitted to the Fire Department on October the 15th of 2015. And it's been a steadily progression of us looking at trucks and picking out what best fits the town of Nashville, what we need. I would love to have it right now, to be honest with y'all, for the fires going on. But it's what we need. It's got the most value for what we need for our Fire Department and for what we're serving in this district. Jeff Turner, with the company that we selected to go with, has submitted, printed several times for us. We've had others come in and we've talked with them, but this is the set of plans that we feel fits the needs of our Fire Department the best. And this has been an ongoing thing for two and a half years now, trying to select out the best truck for us.
Now, this has been a collective activity?
Yes, sir. This has been, this has been with the battalion chiefs, the volunteer battalion chief. It's been a group of people. It's not just been those seven. I've had input in it. Everyone that's in the Fire Department has had input into it, so.
As compared to the last Pierce that we put, the engine that we purchased, are there any additional features on this new unit?
This one actually, actually it has more safety features, just like a vehicle. This fire truck comes with airbags. So if we have an accident, the airbags deploy, so it hopefully save us and not have as many injuries. There are some extra things. This actually has a rescue body on it, which if you saw and didn't know the difference in it, you couldn't tell the difference. The rescue body actually has more compartment space that we can put tools in to extricate. So when we get on scene, we can actually start our extrication off of this engine, to where the other engines do not have that capability, so.
Other comments, questions?
We have four bays. Where will this one fit?
We are, we're in, we will probably move some trucks around. We'll probably have to move a truck outside right now. The Tahoe and the other vehicle sets outside now, but we will make arrangements to make the best spot to put this truck where we need it. To make it, to make the most value. We can, we have one truck that we can probably move outside, and it won't do as much damage to it outside as it would the other trucks, because they don't have hose exposed to the sunlight, so. But we have thought that, that has been a thought process too, for what we're going to do with this truck.
So housing is not a problem?
How much work are we doing on that old France at this time? Are we still doing work on that?
They are still working on it. Actually, it was in the Christmas parade not too long ago, but they're still steadily trying to do little odds and anything to that too.
We could take that out of the bay and-
Yes, sir.
Is there room at the town shop?
Actually, we have moved it so we could put the other two trucks in the bay with this incoming weather. We have actually moved it over to the town shop and put it in the, under the shelter out there. We did that today.
So the room is there for-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any further comments?
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you.
The reason that we are pushing this is to get the discount.
Yes, ma'am. There is a-
It was a price increase.
Yes, ma'am. There is a marginal discount. There's, if it goes to February the 1st, it's a $17,000 increase, just with the 3% going up on the truck.
Because my understanding is, this was going to be in the 18, 19 budget. And so this was pushed up really fast. I mean, I didn't know anything about it.
Right.
And it just really kind of took me back when I found out, okay, we've got to make a move on this tonight.
Yes, ma'am. And if you look at where we are at and where we need it, the other two trucks have been giving us some problems. So this truck is at a time when it would come in. So maybe the mechanical issues with the other trucks will stop, so we can put this truck on the front line. So that's one of the main issues. But the cost increase, these trucks go up every year. If you look at the truck that we bought in 2007, I mean, 2007, compared to the increase today, that truck would actually be, I think, we come up today with $643,000. If you bought that same Pierce that we bought in 2007 due to the increases. So we have done a few different things with this truck that we're not doing on this truck, but it is what we need. This truck will serve all the purpose for the people of Nashville and the communities, surrounding communities.
The 2001 truck we have, does this still have any vitality to it?
Yes, sir. We still use that truck. That is actually would be our third out engine now, and on residential structures and commercial structures, especially in the Nashville, we have a three-engine need here in the town.
Okay. We paid $335,000 on that, and I thought it was all the money in the world.
Right.
Yeah. Which it was at the time.
Right.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, now, with all that done, we need to move the resolution. And we approve the resolution, then we approve the terms and conditions, so we'll move on. If I can find my resolution. Okay, this is a resolution, 2018. All resolutions have to be read. Resolution of the Town Council to the Town of Nashville authorize the Nashville Fire Department to enter an agreement to purchase a 2018 Pierce Enforcer Rescue Pumper from Atlantic Emergency Solutions Incorporated, Atlantic, in the amount of $548,907. Whereas the Town of Nashville Fire Department desires to purchase a 2018 Pierce Enforcer Fire Rescue Pumper to serve the Town of Nashville and the Gully Fire District. And whereas the Town of Nashville has established a capital improvement fund for the purpose of budgeted capital expenditures. And whereas Atlantic Solutions Incorporated has a master purchasing agreement through the Houston-Galveston Area Council for Pierce Manufacturing Fire Apparatus. And whereas the Town of Nashville qualifies under Policy Manual for Local Government Section 35 Part 2 Statutory Requirement and Guidance, 1C Exceptions to Form a Bidding Process and Use the H-GAC Process. And whereas the Town of Nashville Fire Department requests permission to purchase a 2018 Pierce Enforcer Rescue Pumper from Atlantic Emergency Solutions at a cost of $548,907 through the inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Nashville, North Carolina, through adoption of this resolution, is hereby authorizing the Nashville Fire Department to enter into the HGAC Interlocal Contract for Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of a 2018 Pierce Enforcer Rescue Pumper from Atlantic Emergency Solutions Incorporated, adopted by the Nashville Town Council at open session during a regulating held on the 2nd day of January 2018, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Okay, the Chair here, motion to approve the resolution?
So made.
Certainly.
It's removed and seconded. We approve the resolution. Any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? It is done. Now, the second item we need to look at, of course, which is to be attached to the purchase order, or the terms and conditions, to go with purchase order 13832, which you've all seen and read. Is everyone satisfied with these, that they should be attached and we could?
Yes, there's some minor changes that I'd like to make, very minor.
And they are?
Just who the contracting parties are, so purchasing contract party, selling contract party, just so we know exactly who's who. Purchaser agrees to purchase, seller agrees to sell pursuant to the following. And then finally, with number seven, the delivery date, $100 per day penalty for each day thereafter. I would just put in a final date until, say, March 1st, at which point Atlantic is in breach of contract.
Okay, run number seven by me again. I was with you up to breach of contract.
So number seven, it says, "Delivery date to be honored before December 1st, 2018", with a $100 per day penalty for each day past the delivery date. And I would simply put comma, "Until", and we can pick whatever date we want, say, March 1st, April 1st, whatever date we want our final end date to be.
Okay.
At which point Atlantic is in breach of contract.
Okay, I see what you're saying there. Excellent. Okay, any questions with the amendments?
Does the vendor have a problem with that? Jeff?
Do you have trouble with the conditions? Okay. Okay. Other comments? Motion to approve the terms and conditions?
With those corrections, I move we approve.
Okay, with the corrections, the motion to be approved. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. Is there discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Who put this together for us?
I did.
Approved by the town attorney.
With some assistance from the Finance Director and Randy. And our town attorney has seen the terms and conditions.
Yeah, they got a lawyer this afternoon, I understand.
You did, huh?
Okay, let me see where am I now? We're down to the budget amendments. Okay, let's move over to our budget amendments.
Did we vote to pull the contract? Already skipping that.
Yes, do we need to do that? If we don't talk about it, it's got to think things as now. You got the purchase order, that's the first one.
We agreed with this new contract dinner, right?
Yeah, there's no contract attached to it, which is the first one. Yeah, yeah, we're safe.
We're safe.
Has been explaining to me. Okay, budget amendment number 18 is the reception of money for the public education grant channel support of $6,756.76 to increase the full budget to $13,653.31. This is money that comes to the state for public education, for public broadcasting. We use it, Mr. Small. We just pass through it to him. It comes from a state cable tax that we pay. The Chair here, motion to approve this budget amendment?
Certainly.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. We approve budget amendment number 18. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and there's a second. Is there discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 18 is approved. Okay, number 19. Again, is reception of money for the park in the amount of $1,380, which is money we received from the insurance company for damage to the fence where the Coca-Cola truck drove over, which increased the budget by $1,380. The Chair here, motion to approve this amendment?
So made.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Would you explain that?
What?
Okay, I was reading down here. Alright, so there was an accident at the park?
Yeah, the Coca-Cola truck drove into the fence.
Several months ago, we had an incident where truck was making a delivery and backing to the fence, made some damage, so we made a claim. So this is just receiving the proceeds from the claim.
Okay, was there a line item for 10, 6, 20, 5700?
That's the miscellaneous line for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, I was looking through the budget and I didn't see a line item in there.
Just property damage?
There's a zero. Originally, there was zero.
Who's talking?
Linda.
Originally, there was $0 budgeted for miscellaneous in Parks and Recreation, but since we received this money from the insurance and we're going to have to make those repairs, then we increased that expenditure line item miscellaneous for those repairs.
Okay, it's just that when I was looking through the budget, I did not see a line item for that.
Right, because it had, it had $0 budgeted.
Okay, that's why I need an explanation.
Yeah, just property damage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the last four digits of all of our account numbers are going to be the same across all departments, so 5,700 is going to be miscellaneous for every department, whether we, whether there's anything budgeted there or not.
But there was nothing. That's why.
That's right.
Okay. I think we had a motion and second for that. Did it get approved? All in favor?
Waiting on you.
Okay, we'll say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. Okay, no. Okay, item number three is a budget amendment 20, which is a recreation expenditure from the General, from the General Fund for some set of tires in the amount of $300. Is that what I see? Okay, which we had to move from gas, from maintenance to gas, tires, and oil to increase that by $300, which is to keep the vehicles going. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. Item number, let's see, amendment number 21 is money we've received for shop with a cop program, which comes from Walmart or someplace, Walmart, I think, in a term of $615. Chair here, motion to approve this money?
So made.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, we'll say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? It is done. Okay, amendment number five, which is number 22 for the Hope Initiative. Again, we're receiving money for the Hope Affair coming from various places in term of $6,203, which will increase our drug prevention budget. The Chair here, motion to approve this number? Amendment?
Certainly.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve it. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? I didn't hear enough yeses.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Alrighty, then number, got an amended item coming for the fire truck, which is coming from our Capital Reserve Fund and our pay-go plan. You mentioned a while ago, this is supposed to come up in next year's budget, which it was supposed to. We had to advance this, and the money we would have deposited next year to pay for the fund, pay for the truck, will still go into the fund. So we actually, no curse off, we've just saved $17,000 on the purchase. And the tune of the money is to move, if I was reading this right, $548,907, as we already have, $286 in the fund. Did I read that right?
Would you like me to explain it, Brian?
No, I'm trying. My stupid glasses and the small print won't let me read this stuff. Normally, I think these things out ahead of time, but this one just hit my hand.
My understanding is, we already have $544,889,889 in that account.
Yeah. Okay. So we want to increase it by 548 or 262? Tell me some question.
It would be 262, wouldn't it?
260, oh, it's separating my mind from it.
Certainly. So you would be paying for this fire truck from really two different accounts, basically. We've set two, we put $544,889 into our Capital Reserve for our General Fund. We've set two, we, we put five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars into our capital reserve for our general fund. Um, according to our capital plan, we have set two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars aside of that five forty-four, eight eighty-nine to go towards this fire truck. Because when we originally put this plan together, we were ballparking, trying to guess what the price of the truck was gonna be, and we were guestimating it five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that two sixty-two, five hundred is exactly half of five twenty-five. Um, so it would be pulling that number, two sixty-two, five hundred, from our capital reserve fund. And then the difference between what the total truck would cost, which is five forty-eight, nine oh seven, and then what was in our reserve fund, the two sixty-two, five hundred, would come from fund balance. That's where, that's that appropriation from fund balance of two eighty-six, four oh seven. So if you add two eighty-six, four oh seven, and two sixty-two, five hundred, you'll get five forty-eight, nine oh seven.
Okay, so we're moving two eighty-six, four oh seven out of fund balance, our cap reserve fund. Did I read that right?
That's correct.
Okay. That type, okay, actually.
And you'd be drawing down on your reserve fund.
Okay, now I see, you gotta get bigger print, man. Okay.
So what does that leave us in fund balance?
We should be somewhere in three and a half million dollars to, total number.
Do we have any idea?
Can you give us a number?
Specifically?
We won't have to have to figure it into the audit.
You won't have to audit it?
I wish I.
What, what?
I wish I could hear what she's saying.
What Linda's saying is fund balance is only legally defined at the time of the audit being completed dated as of June thirtieth of the preceding year. That's the only time you actually have a defined amount of money in fund balance. Everything else is constantly in flux. So it's impossible to define how much money you have in fund balance until you've completed a fiscal year.
We have a ballpark there.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be.
Three and a half.
Yeah.
I thought it was three point one after paying off the last year.
Well, it's, it's gonna be.
We made some money.
It, it's gonna be all in how you define it, because technically, once you set money aside in a capital reserve fund, it's no longer considered available fund balance. Now, it's still sitting in a bank account, drawing interest, just like all of our other fund balance money, but it's no longer considered fund balance because it's now been assigned to capital. So that, you actually have less fund balance because of that, so it's, it's all in how you choose to look at that number.
I think what Ms. Hettin is referring to, though, we know it's always fluctuating, but, but we just started at the beginning of a new fiscal year, and we just had an audit, and the audit said we had X number of dollars in the fund balance. Now, based on that figure.
What you got left?
If you take this out with fire department, where do we stand now? They're ready to.
And the audit for this past fiscal year has not been completed, so that's why we can't answer that question.
But he gave us a number.
But we're gonna be okay.
I know we're gonna be okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, my, my arithmetic tells me around three and a half, yours says three point one, so it's somewhere in that range. But we'll know.
Over three.
Oh, it's over three, yeah.
I just think we need a better handle on this.
Well, I, I just.
Yeah. We can, we can get that number.
Okay.
Okay, now here motion we, uh, act on budget amendment twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yeah, so made.
Okay, so by the fire truck?
By the fire truck.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Okay, if there being none, all in favor indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, it is done. Okay, we're down now to the manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Budget amendment twenty-three in your packet is to move, which I've approved, is to move three thousand dollars to cover some repair costs in the fire department. We had some excess funds. We, we're good? Okay. So we're moving three thousand dollars from gas, oil and tires, we feel comfortable, we'll have plenty of gas, oil and tires money to cover us through the rest of the budget year. But we've had an exceedingly high year in the number of repairs to our vehicles in the fire department. Good reason that we made a decision tonight to, um, make the fire engine purchase, because that will cut down on ultimately the total cost of repairs for our vehicles. Um, in our reports from our departments, um, the Parks and Rec Department would like to report that we've received one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from Nash County Arts Council grassroots art program subgrant, and these funds will be used to continue our Creekside Music Series in twenty eighteen. Uh, recreation has began advertising the Free Family Fitness Fund Series. This series will run every Thursday in January and February from six-thirty to seven-thirty at the Nashville Elementary School Gym. This is a partnership between the elementary school PTA and local businesses, including Nashville Marshall Art Academy, Key Fitness, Zumba with Tevis Harris and the Hype Staff, and Yoga with Cabran. This series aims to promote a family-friendly and fun atmosphere in which families with members of all ages can come and move together during the winter months. Um, kicked off after our, our after-school tutoring program in Nashville Elementary School, we're working with Nashville Elementary School and local churches. Uh, will be a first meeting greet with tutors and students scheduled for December the twelfth. Tutoring will begin on Thursday, January fourth. Tutoring will be held in the elementary school cafeteria from three to four P M. We've also received a grant from the N R P A, which is the National Recreation and Park Association, titled the Walk with Ease Instructor Training Grant. This is a seven hundred dollar value in training and materials for an adult walking program we will be implementing in the spring. We also have adult co-ed soccer registration open, and it will run through January the thirtieth. Uh, play will be held on Tuesday nights, possibly Thursday also during the month of February, and players can register individually or with a team. In our planning department, we have released ten more re, new residential zoning permits this month, which brings our total to fifty-eight units for the year. This figure is a mix of single and two-family units. And this is really interesting, when we put our performance measures together for the year, we were anticipating a total of, of sixty zoning certificates, and we're already at that point this year. So that shows we've had a lot of growth and development in this town, and it's the largest number we've had since the beginning of the recession. So that's great for our town. It is also interesting to learn that our car charging station outside of our library has been used fifteen times and has consumed sixty-six point one kilowatts since being installed this summer. The average charging length is forty-three minutes, and the total cost of electricity for all charges is seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, Smith Property donation was recorded the last working day of twenty seventeen, and we are now the proud owners of property located off Western Avenue.
Would you like to mention that we didn't get it all?
Um, I, I'm gonna let Byron elaborate on that.
Would you like to tell us that, you know, the initial proposal included a specified amount of land and went back and changed her mind, he kept some of it, did you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith, uh, one of his heirs was a Robert Smith, and he lives, um, out there, that's his family residence, and he was using about one-third of an acre for his own personal use. And so Mr. Smith, the one who made the, uh, offer to us, wanted to give that one-third of the acre to his family member, Robert, and so that was done. So we've got everything he said minus points.
Thank you.
Um, we'd also like to coordinate as far as our demo for the robot camera, uh, our sewer camera. I know we've discussed that in previous council meetings. Um, Mr. Baines is aware of discussing that tonight, if y'all would like to schedule a definitive date and time, we can do that tonight for, uh, having a demonstration of our sewer camera. Um, if y'all have any dates and times that would work for y'all, Jamie's prepared to discuss that.
Why don't we let it warm up first?
Okay.
I like that idea.
Okay. Alright. Um, in our fire department, uh, I, I'd really like to commend Chief Goodbrode's efforts. He put a tremendous amount of time and effort into making this truck possible, um, especially here down in the last, uh, weeks and months, gearing up for his retirement, uh, where he easily could have just packed it in and gotten ready for retirement, he put a lot of hours and time in to make sure that even though he's no longer working for the town, we had the best fire engine possible that was presented to you tonight, and I, I think he deserves a lot of credit for that. As long as, as well as the other people that participated, uh, Chief Joyner, um, Scott Whitford, and our, our truck committee, and our volunteer and career staff. I'd like to make you aware that Squad fourteen is currently out of service and is being worked on, um, having some repair issues. That, that's the, the little truck with the. Yes, sir.
What, what are those problems?
Uh, Chris has stepped down, I'm not sure what all those issues are, but I know it's being worked on. Um, Battalion Chief Edwards, uh, is reporting that Nash County has decided to go with the Viper radio system. Um, they've informed us that they will be buying the initial round of, um, Viper radios for all the participating municipalities. Uh, that would save the town up front around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is what, uh, Chief Joyner reported in our department head meeting today. So we will be responsible, uh, for replacing those Viper radios in the future, when, when these break down. Um, but this will be a significant savings getting us started, which is different from, um, the sheriff's department giving us radios for our P D, because those were already used radios, these would be brand-new radios. Um, so that would kick us down the road for several years and having to buy that for our fire department, but it is an expensive cost to keep up. Uh, Lieutenant Chris Jenkins has accepted a position with Nash County Emergency Services, and he started today in the Fire Marshal Division. Lou reports in the Town Clerk and Human Resources Department that we've hosted retirement receptions for Randy Goodbrode and Larry Williams, and we also gave out a number of service awards for employees for five years of service, ten years of service, fifteen years of service, and twenty years of service. Um, we will be closed on, um, Martin Luther King holiday, which is January the fifteenth, which is a Monday. So I wanna make sure everyone's aware of how that's gonna impact our garbage schedule. Uh, we will not do bulk pickup, which we normally do on Friday that week, and we will push our garbage schedule back one day for every day that week. So if you normally have Monday garbage collection, you'd get it on Tuesday. If you have Thursday collection, you'll get it on Friday. But I wanna make sure that, you know, our reporters and things hear that so it can be, you know, shared with the public, and we will advertise that on our website and in the town hall. Jamie Baines reports in the Public Works Department that our garbage route has remained on schedule through the holidays despite running of our less efficient secondary truck. Uh, we have two garbage trucks, our primary truck is out of service at the moment, there's a fuel injector pump that is backordered, that it's sitting, um, in a shop right now, uh, that we're waiting for that to be manufactured so we can put it on the truck. So, um, this was quite amazing that we were able to get our, uh, all of our garbage collected during the week of Christmas, which we've always been behind on, that's always been a struggle. Um, I have received no complaints this year on garbage, which is great during Christmas, 'cause that's, that's always a challenge. Um, speaking with Mr. Baines earlier, um, I believe that some of the credit goes to how our leaf truck gave us the opportunity to be able to run two shifts to pick up, um, garbage. It freed up one of our equipment operators, 'cause we've been so efficient with leaf collection now, that we were able to run two shifts without it affecting other operations as much. Um, that new leaf vacuum truck has dumped thirty-six loads since it's been in service and has remained on schedule through the holidays. Um, at this time, um, normally we've only dumped about twenty loads, and that's, um, those are smaller loads, and we've done twice that this year so far. So we're, we're way ahead of schedule than we compare to the past on our, our leaf collection. Uh, also understand that we're having some difficulty with our asphalt recycler, that there's some mechanical issue with that, but it's under warranty, so that's gonna be repaired, but, um, that is out of service at the moment. And we are on schedule, uh, with our street sweeper, and it has swept twenty miles, uh, of streets. Um, Mr. Baines reports that, uh, we may need to do a budget amendment at some point during the current fiscal year for garbage cans. Uh, reason being, because of having those, uh, sixty zoning certificates, we've had more development in town, so we've had greater than anticipated demand for garbage collection. So we may need to do a budget amendment to increase what we normally purchase for garbage collection based on that increased development.
These will also be favorable sales to garbage crews?
That's right. That's right, and, and finally, in our, in our library, uh, Emily reports that we've co-hosted our Santa Storytime and Polar Express PJ Party with Parks and Recreation, which was a success with a hundred and seventy-six participants. They've gone to Book Trader and received between forty-five hundred and five thousand donated books, which are currently back in the storage room, a lot of those are gonna be put up for sale. Uh, we also had a library advisory board, uh, library advisory board meeting with a quorum in attendance. Um, we've also had six escape room sessions with many teenage participants, which has been a great activity. Um, we're also gonna have the VITA tax prepar, services begin on January the twenty-fifth here in the library, and we're also planning on having the library closed for staff training on January the twenty-sixth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Oh, you mentioned a while ago when this, uh, repairs on your fire truck, budget number twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
That you're adding money now to your maintenance, and half the year is consumed, and all your maintenance money is consumed. Uh, of course, you can't predict breakdowns and stuff, but as you go forward, working in the next budget, you may wanna think about elevating that number some way or doing, doing something with it, 'cause you're out of money, you're out of money. And you can't keep taking things out of gas, tires and oil, sooner or later you have to park something. Okay, all that said and done, we're down to council comments. I'd like to observe that Charles Taylor's not with us tonight, 'cause unfortunately, he's got a, a case of strep throat flu or something, it's really bad. I talked with him about twelve o'clock, and he sounded really terrible, and I haven't heard anything since. He was waiting to see whether he had strep throat or flu at that time, has anybody heard anything from him since then?
I, I spoke with him briefly over text, he, um, I didn't, he don't, didn't tell me any update on that, though.
Okay, okay. Hope he's okay, strep throat is mean. And I'd like to thank, uh, Emily for the hot chocolate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome addition.
It's per, it's perfect on, on tonight, wish I could put my feet in it. Okay, all that said and done, we'll move on. Mr. Taylor, you have comments?
Yes, as, as always, uh, I, I heard nothing but compliments for our, our employees, especially our maintenance department, uh, Jamie's, Jamie's crew. Uh, the guys were out there tonight at six-thirty, still picking up garbage, you know, so that, that, that really impressed me, they worked extra hours, I know you said double shifts, to get the job done, but even the people that I saw along the street were saying, these guys out mighty late, I said, yep, we're trying to catch up. But, uh, they ought to be commended, Jamie, if you would pass that on, and that leaf, that leaf truck is, is, is doing an awesome, is doing an awesome job. On my street where I live on, they must have us on satellite or something, 'cause all we do is rake it out to the street, and as soon as we finish it, they come around the corner. So I, I don't know if they're watching us or what, but, uh, they're doing, they're doing an outstanding job, so, uh, they're, they're also to be commended for doing.
You must pay your taxes on time.
Well, I do, I do pay the, pay the taxes on time, but, uh, they're doing an outstanding job, so if you would pass those compliments on, I'd appreciate it. Uh, Chief, with the inclement, uh, Chief Basil, with the, the temperatures dropping like it did last night and night before last, and some more cold weather I hear is, is coming, if you would have your guys, if they can, if we've got any elderly citizens here in town that we have in the past had to check on, or we know of some, please, when, when this cold weather hits, have them swing by and just knock on the door and make sure they're okay. Because we don't want the fact, we don't want the, the temperature to come back up, and we find that we've lost someone that we could have taken care of, so. If you have your guys, if you know anybody, just, and I want it, I, I, I mentioned once before, I wish we had a list compiled of all those people that, that we need to check on, but uh, your guys are rotating, are moving around in town, just, if they know of somebody, check on somebody and, and make sure they're okay.
Yeah.
And I, I, that, that, that'll go a long way.
Yeah.
Uh, please, for you people that are here, make sure that you, uh, are doing, uh, uh, preventive measures around the house to, to make sure your water is going. We don't expect any ice or nothing, so hopefully the electricity will be going, but let me tell you, taking a cold shower in the morning does not feel good at all. I had cold water running this morning, but no hot water, so, uh, if, if you think that's a welcome sight, wait till your wife had to get up and go get in the cold shower, so, uh.
Well, you only use much water.
Uh, didn't use a whole lot of water, no. So, uh, but make sure you, you, you got your pipes closed up, and, and one simple thing that you can do is to close your vents that are around your house. I know some contractors are told, and I was told at the day, some contractors tell people, don't close your vents, but in inclement weather, when it's real cold, close those vents and keep that warm air under the house, 'cause, uh, I mean, when I got out today and thawed mine up, it took me exactly four minutes to thaw out a pipe. But, uh, the eight, the eight hours I went without thawing it out was, uh, was hell, so. Make sure you kinda do a little preventive maintenance, so you won't wake up in the morning with no hot water. Or no water at all, yeah.
Along the line of the old folks, uh, during the last hurricane we had from, when parts of town over my side of town was out of electricity for a long time, there were a number of persons who had breathing apparatuses, things working with batteries.
Right.
That was winding down, and they were calling me. I found out that those people were registered with the fire department, who were registered with the county emergency people to get them covered, so. The old folks are, if they're in the channel, you know, they'd be taken care of. And as for garbage, we usually get garbage coming by my house every Monday morning at, uh, somewhere between seven forty-five and eight o'clock relentlessly. Last Tuesday, people waited for that to happen, and they didn't come by. So about nine o'clock, I started getting the phone calls. You know, people, we, we're so regularly picking it up, and. We're so regularly picking it up, and people are so acute, so attuned to seeing these things happen when it didn't happen, they were getting concerned. But they did get there about three o'clock in the afternoon because they moved them out and all stuff anyway. Okay, all righty. All right, Ms. Hymen?
Yes, I have some questions. Is there an update on the Lumber Street condemnation?
Yes, ma'am. That and the attorney, since then, all we can do, it needs to be signed by a tax collector, and we currently do not have a tax collector.
So who do we get to sign?
We cannot move forward until we get a tax collector.
So who do we get to sign?
So it's in Limba?
Well, we need, we need to get a clarification on who can sign this thing, other than taxpayer, I mean, tax collector.
I understand that.
Because somebody, somebody stands in for somebody everywhere. Okay, we use the town, the county tax collector?
Well, the attorney had a few suggestions, one being an affidavit signed by certain staff members, but at this point, nothing's been signed.
Okay.
We don't have a tax collector, and all I can do, staff and attorneys can do it.
This needs to be addressed. It's been going on forever.
Forever.
Who will sign it for the county, if the county had this situation?
Jim Rean's a tax collector for the county, but we do not have a tax collector. That's the document that needs to be signed, so we can either sign an affidavit of some sort or just wait till we get another tax collector.
Well, let's get on the affidavit.
We need to get on the affidavit.
Whatever that takes, let's get that done. Because like she said, we've been on this thing now forever.
And to get this far, and then we're getting another hurdle.
Because we won't have to...
We're gonna jump, we're gonna move forward.
Because we won't have to tear the house down if it's gonna fall down.
But then we've got to clean it up.
Been that long, yeah, absolutely.
And what's the latest update on the sewer outfall line? There's a lot of work going on, and does anybody know?
Yes, ma'am. All the pipes have been laid, with the exception of the bore that's currently being bored, and then the one that will be bored underneath Wambler Road. We extend the contract to seventy-five days because of the rock, so the new deadline is March the eleventh, which is when time changes, and we're going four feet a day in the rock.
Four feet a day, okay. Is there a cost increase because of this?
No, ma'am.
So right now, we are...
Right, right now, we're, we're under budget. We're on budget, and we're not going to increase anything.
Okay, we're not under budget because we were six-hundred, what, three thousand over?
We need to increase our original budget in order to concept and do this project, and we do not anticipate increasing any more than what we already have.
We need timely updates on that because this is a huge project. Anybody driving along the highway can see it.
Yeah. Well, as he says, it's all completed except for the rock excavation. And what Sastas mentioned, hooking the pipes together.
So have we gotten completely under the highway?
No, ma'am. We're about sixty percent. We're somewhere in the median approaching the next lane of traffic. The only idea we have to go any faster, the crew has two born crews, and they are currently in County Rock intensity, and so if they can get off of that project, then we can possibly put them on the Wambler Road bore, where they can do that simultaneously with the other one. We do anticipate it changing from rock to soil somewhere underneath Wambler Road, but underneath sixty-four will be all rock, and we will go four feet a day or twenty feet a day.
But we're moving from one foot a day to four feet a day now, right?
We're going four feet a day.
Okay, so that's some improvement.
Yeah.
And another thing is the Elm Street water drainage. That project from Alston all the way down to Stony Creek.
Yes, ma'am. We did receive five hundred thousand dollars in Golden Lake money. The county received a one-million-dollar grant of that. They're going to do single-family rehabs, except they're going to allocate one hundred and fifty thousand towards that, which brings our total up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the idea is you've got two different grant agencies, two different local governments that are going to work together to try to do this project for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I thought the total was nine hundred thousand, so we're two-fifty. What, who's going to come up with the two-fifty?
Yes, ma'am. The, the real money always comes when you design it and you bid it, very much like the Seaplane Project. The professional engineer review, which is what you're alluding to, was eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and that was for the worst-case scenario. Since then, we've put this robot camera in there to kind of see what we can save, what we can't save. But we still have to go and get a design professional to design it, and then we're going to have to bid it, and then that's the real money. But as of today, we have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and our goal is to design and bid it from that arm.
Okay, who gave us a figure of eight ninety-three?
That was our professional engineer review, which was stopped engineering.
Okay, so eight ninety-three is the worst-case scenario.
That's what they believe.
What did the camera tell us?
Well, we, Jamie can maybe correct me if I'm a little off, but there may be a little section we can save on the north side of Elm Street, close to the county parking lot. But everything else is going to need to be ripped up, and the idea is to start at Austin Street, rip it up, whether we put it back in the road right away or we go down the parking lot, it gets to be determined, because we honestly don't know which is the best alternative at this point. But we're going to have to make it down to Body Street, then we're going to have to cross. If we can save that pipe, it's a huge amount of pipe that we can save that we don't have to spend. But then when we get to the end down there close to the church, we're going to rip all that up and put that back.
When you say save the pipe, you mean save it like it is or dig it out and put it back?
Save it like it is, or hug.
Okay. Other comments?
I know that there are some citizens who still have some concerns about the decorations downtown. Amy, you were here tonight. Was anything you wanted to say?
Well, I would just, me personally, I think that, um...
Amy? Amy, would you come to the podium, please? I can't hear you or see you behind the post. Thank you.
Well, we've talked partly on, as far as the chamber goes as well, is maybe the businesses that are involved with the additional tax dollars, that maybe we have a little bit more input this year in the Christmas decorations or what the tax dollars are going to be made, you know, spent for, versus this past year, we didn't have any input. And I feel like that since we are the ones that are paying for this, that maybe we would have additional input.
Now, you're speaking from the chamber point of view and not the business owner's point of view?
Both.
Both, okay, okay.
Yeah, especially the businesses because, you know, especially if we could just have like an informal meeting that, you know, basically gave ideas as to what they wanted the money used for and the decorations.
Okay.
Because I would really love to see downtown Nashville really pretty.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, let me add something to that.
Yeah.
I purposely made a phone call today because I'm, I'm still getting conversations about the Christmas decorations, even though Christmas is over with. And me personally, I'd be glad when, when they come off full so we can move, move forward. But I made a call today to the, the mayor of Red Oak. And Red Oak just took the project on and bought beautiful decorations to go in their little community of Red Oak, the town of Red Oak. But they told me they bought forty, they bought forty units, and it cost them thirty-two thousand dollars. So compared to what we had to put, what we've got into, what we have here, it's just a little stab in the bucket to what, compared to what it costs. So please keep in mind, if, if people are asking you about it, it's not as easy and inexpensive as people think it is. I mean, thirty-three thousand dollars for Red Oak is a big chunk of change. And we only went twelve, I believe, so, but with twelve included more than just, more than just some decorations, more than just the lights, rather. But that's, if you tell people how much, the people I talked with, when I told them how much decorations cost, they kind of backed off a little bit. So just be a little bit tolerant, and I understand that the decorations that we do have that did go up, that caused so much concern, that, that decorations can be improved upon next year. And, and I think that's where we, that's the stance we're going to have, have to take on that. So it's, it may not have hit you right start, but it ain't, but it ain't, it ain't as bad as it looked. Well, it was bad as it looked, but the situation could've been worse.
I ran the same situation as late as yesterday morning. I explained things to these people. They slowly understand things.
Yeah, they understand.
My concern is the process. We, someone contracted with this outfit in Spring Hood, and according to the Municipal Service District, if you contract, that should come before the council. And here are two contracts, and if we had seen this, maybe, you know, things would be different.
Yeah.
But we, we were never privy to the contract. We gave permission for decorations and for the battleship and all these, you know, but there was nothing specific. And I just feel like we were sidestepped.
Well, as Amy said, we'll move next, next year with better communications.
Right. We, we, we can't do, we can't undo what already has been done.
Yeah, can't be revised.
We just have to improve.
Well, that's why the advisory board had minutes, and if we'd seen those minutes, and who, you know...
But we...
An advisory board is just that, advisory.
We'll do better next year.
The bottom...
Okay, thank, thank you.
The buck stops with us, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments?
No comments tonight.
Okay. I think you sit and tell someone else something.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think not having a tax collector brings to light that one issue, but it's a, a small focal point of, of a bigger problem. We've, I'd like to suggest having a work session to discuss issues we're facing in the finance department. Our finance department's faced a lot of obstacles in the past year between turnover in positions, significant amount of work that's they've, that's been put on them. The employees that we have have done a great job keeping, trying, doing their best to keep up with what's going on. But the short of it is, we have nowhere near the amount of resources that we need to adequately do that job and make sure that the finances of the town of Nashville are secure. So I, I think we need to have a serious discussion about adding another position to our finance department in, in a key leadership role, and I don't think it's something that can wait until next fiscal year. I think it's something that should require action much sooner than that.
Do you want to work that as part of our budget planning session or before?
Well, we can, we can work it into our retreat, but, but I think it's something that we need to take action on before next fiscal year.
Raise your plan.
Okay. Another item, I wanted to make the council aware that department heads are, are planning on having a, a small retreat ourselves to work on a strategic plan. This is something I'd like to present back to y'all at our retreat in February. This would take in consideration mission vision, core values, strategic priorities, and goals that would tie into our existing objectives and performance measures at our department level. We've been discussing this type of thing over the last couple of years, but it's we're at the point where we need to move further with this and have a plan.
Must be a large reading document.
It, hopefully not. This...
It'd get to us all his...
This should not be something that's lengthy. This should be the kind of thing that someone can memorize and we can make a graphic out of and put on a wall. This is something that helps shape the future of the town. What, what are we working for and why are we here? And something that we can communicate to our citizens of why we're providing the services that we're doing, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, other comments? Thank you everybody for coming. Be careful in life, because it's going to be very cold, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Being a brother, biggest move is adjourn.
There's a movement.
Second.
And a second we adjourn. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicating somebody saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?